Call to order the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August 2, 2006. Will you please join me in a pleasure?
I will lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, with our skeleton crew this evening, shall we have a roll call? I'll let you do it, Ms. Brooks.
Commissioner, your board.
Here, present.
Chairman Horsman.
Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Beldner.
Here.
Commissioner Warren. Here. Commissioner Warren. Here. Thank you. This time we'll go over the minutes. If there's any discussion, please let us know for action to be given.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting, August 2, 2006, as presented.
Just had a motion. I'll say it. Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along to public comments. If you have not signed in this evening, will you please do so? No one has given any public comment cards to me, so right now it looks like it may go really quickly. Disclosure of ex parte communications. None.
Okay, babe.
None?
None.
Okay. Then we're off to our new business. Opening the public hearing for case 063000005, Australia Falls Freeway Pylon Sign Use Permit. I'll open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation. And actually, at the same time, we will go ahead and do the next case that follows with it. We will have, of course, separate voting on it, but go ahead. Steve and do both at the same time.
Madam Chair, this is two requests for the Australia Falls Regional Center. And per your direction, I will go over use permit for the freeway pylons and a comprehensive sign package with this one presentation. The freeway pylons, they do require a use permit through our ordinance that was adopted back in June of '06. And those freeway pylons would be for the Australia Falls Regional Center. On the screen is the overall regional center with the addition of parcel 14 south of McDowell Road that was in action, you saw a couple months ago, if I remember correctly. That is also now a part of the Goodyear Planned Regional Center. To be approved, a use permit is required for freeway pylon signs. And to be approved, it must not be detrimental to people, to neighborhoods, or public welfare, must be compatible with uses in the surrounding area, and must show conformance with design guidelines that were adopted with our ordinance in June of '06. And just for a quick picture of the proposed freeway pylons. This is the current proposal for the freeway pylon signs. They have an 85-foot tall basic structure with some embellishments going above that 85-foot height. The request is for three freeway pylons. As you can see in the picture, freeway pylons are proposed on that parcel 14, which is the parcel that has freeway frontage. As outlined in the staff report, staff does find that the use permit meets approval criteria for freeway pylon sign and that it does provide justification for two freeway pylons. The third freeway pylon, if warranted, staff is looking at with that stipulation allowing that third freeway pylon, excuse me, freeway pylon sign, if West Core can provide five, what we're calling some top-tier businesses, which were provided in exhibit A. And I do have a revised exhibit A that the only revision is we have what are being called Highline or luxury auto dealerships that were added. These would also qualify as one of the five. And there on the screen is the typical dealerships that we're looking at. And I'm sure we're going to kind of switch gears here and talk about now the comprehensive sign package. What is being proposed is a comprehensive sign package for Australia Falls. With this sign package, you will see in the packet standards for freeway pylons and standards for subarea 2. And this here on the screen is the power center. As you can see, we're looking at three monuments, freestanding monuments along McDowell and Pebble Creek Parkway. One along Montevista, we have center IDs at the corners. With the sign package, West Core is providing standards predominantly for subarea 2 at this point in time. In the future, supplemental attachments will be brought before you and the city council for your review and approval. Those will be for the other subareas within the regional center. With the sign package, we are establishing four subarea 2. We've got freestanding monuments, we've got the center ID, we have wayfinding and wall signage. After completing our review of the center and its signage, staff finds the sign package is appropriate, given the size and scope of the regional center. We also find that the signage is comparable to other centers within this area. With that, Madam Chair, staff is recommending approval of both requests, the use permit and a comprehensive sign package, subject to their respective stipulations. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is also available for questions with staff.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Did the commission have any questions of staff? How about the applicant? The applicant like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Stephen Earl. I'm here tonight in behalf of West Core. On the comprehensive sign plan, you folks are all very familiar with Australia Falls. You saw it originally, you saw it just a couple months ago, and we added the parcel next to the freeway. We agreed completely with staff's report to you. You each have a booklet that we have been referring to tonight that has all the details that we're discussing. The only part where we disagree with staff has to do with the stipulation regarding whether or not the third sign can be approved now or later. We're sort of coming to the reluctant conclusion that we're going to have to demonstrate a need for the third sign by the top-tier tenants. But it's a little bit about chicken and egg as to when you're out marketing the availability of this sign. So I want to provide you with just a little background for the record on this. Obviously, West Core has demonstrated 30 years of experience of bringing regional malls to various parts of the valley. If there's one entity in this valley that can tell you with some certainty their ability to produce regionally significant tenants, it would have to be West Core. They currently have a project of this magnitude being constructed in Gilbert today. They're about 90% done with the power center portion of it, and they've started grading the regional center portion of it. It's about 330 acres. It lies all along the 202, so it has clear visibility from the 202. Unfortunately, this one does not have that clear visibility. And that particular project has eight freeway pylon signs. And we're obviously not asking for eight freeway pylon signs. We know the sensitivity of pylon signs, so we're trying to be respectful of that city sensitivity and yet still have the flexibility to go to ICSE and secure these top-tier tenants to the city and into this project. Now, this property does have some challenges because instead of being all the way along I-10, it has just 30 acres of frontage. Now fortunately, that's 30 acres and 1,000 feet, which is the minimum for having a pylon sign. But the bulk of the project is a quarter mile away and up to over a half-mile away. So many of the tenants that we're going to be acquiring and attracting to this project, we're going to have to tell them, your wall sign may not be fully visible from the freeway, and you will probably have to depend upon the pylon sign. Now, sometimes when we talk to some folks, they say, "Well, you've got centers in the valley like Arrowhead that, you know, has done just fine without pylon signs." Well, of course, Arrowhead was built 10 years ago, and even that one and the first mall built by West Core 30 years ago at Metro Center are now going back because the tenants are now saying, "Well, wait a minute. In the new malls that you're building, we get freeway identification. You need to go back and get that identification." But clearly, when you're competing in the marketplace today, one of the first questions you get asked in that marketing procedure is, will we have clear visibility on a freeway sign? So it's all about being next to the freeway and having that visibility. If we, the staff has said, "We'd rather have you come back for the third sign after you've demonstrated that you've got at least five of these top-tier tenants and go back through commission and council because we, staff, are not comfortable approving that when you show the top-tier tenants." Our desire, of course, was that staff would be able to say, "You have met the requirement for five top-tier tenants, therefore, we can administratively approve the third sign." That was still our preference, but again, we understand the nature of things, but at least we wanted to put on the record that if we have to come back for that third sign, that by virtue of doing this, when we're marketing this to a particular tenant in these conventions and even outside the ICSE convention, if we have to say, "We have no idea whether we're going to get that third sign, but if you come, we'll try," is a lot different than if we have the top five top-tier tenants, we have strong confidence that we can go back and get that fifth sign. We have to go back through commission and council, but we have fairly strong confidence. So we want to at least put on the record that that is a kind of a criteria that is in that stipulation number one, so that we can have, be able to negotiate with some confidence. Just for sake of comparison here, and we're not trying to belabor this point, but just so that it's clear that we're in compliance with the ordinance. The ordinance normally requires one sign, allows one sign for the 30 acres and 1,000 feet. That's how the project just to the east, excuse me, just to the west of us for Evergreen got one sign because it has 30 acres. And one might wonder, "Well, how many signs are we going to have in this mile from Bullard to Pebble Creek?" Well, fortunately, we know that the Bullard Wash comes through here, so this is not a parcel that is going to be privately owned. This is our parcel, and this is a small 12-acre parcel that, again, doesn't meet the criteria for a sign. So there'll be the signs that are granted for this project, which, by the way, if this is 30 acres, this is 330 acres, so it's 10 times as large as this. It doesn't have the immediate visibility, so it needs signage along the freeway. But there will be a total of, even with the three, four. Now, that's two more than you would normally prefer because your spacing says half-mile. But we're talking about, and that's in the staff report, and the stip says 510 feet. So just by comparison, we're, you know, 10 times larger than the normal situation. And the last important point here, the ordinance says that it's one sign except, there's one exception, and that exception is where, I guess I ought to really quote, "More than one freeway pylon sign may be considered when the site substantially in excess of 30 acres," and we're 10 times larger than that, "and two, we have a tenant or tenants of regional significance that require freeway signage." We can guarantee to you that these regionally significant tenants will require, as a part of our negotiations, to have that kind of signage. And again, because we're a quarter mile away, it is pretty important. So again, we agree with the staff report. We reluctantly go along with stipulation number one, but wanted to get on the record the importance of being able to have confidence that we can come back for that third sign. Be glad to respond to any questions you might have. As to the freeway pylon signs, if you'd like me to discuss the other signs, I'm happy to, but we try to be in compliance. We're basically in almost direct comparison to the project, again, to the west of us, Evergreen's project. And what we're dealing with on the comp plan portion is really only the power center, which is twice as big and has much more arterial street frontage. That's why we have more signs being proposed, but the size of the signs are roughly comparable. And of course, the architecture of these signs, both the pylon signs, the freestanding monument signs, and the other signs are all comparable in design. This is the freeway sign. These are all, in the materials provided. This is the power center locations of the monument signs, as well as the corner. And then this is the signage at the corner that has the same general characteristics, architectural characteristics. This is the monument signs for tenants, and again, the same architectural characteristics on this sign as well, all of which are consistent with the architecture of the center.
Mr. Bay.
Actually, my question's more towards staff, and I'll get to you in a minute, or you can relax for a second. The question I have really alludes back to what Earl was saying about the number of pylon signs along the frontage of I-10 and that one-mile area. They're requesting three for their area, and we have two additional parcels next to that that both qualify. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay. So if you look at the areas, Steve, yes, to the west, yeah. So you've got, see how their parcel is split up, and then that takes like about a 30-degree angle? And then there's this triangle piece still remaining. Is that a separate project? Okay. And then the parcel next to that, is that yet another one or two projects?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bay, basically from the west property line of this subarea 3 to about here is a, basically, flood control, Bullard Wash runs through that property.
Okay.
And from here, from this line to the freeway is another project that has one freeway pylon sign. So we'll have one here. And these, this won't qualify, neither will this property to the east. It doesn't meet the 30-acre minimum for a sign. I think, as Mr. Earl said, I think it was only 12 acres or so. It would not qualify for a sign.
It's not that I don't trust him, I'd just rather hear it from you. The other comment was based on the fact that we do have a stipulation for two pylon signs that we would approve today if that went through. With the third pylon coming before us in a separate action, I guess I'm not, I guess you have to get a commitment from five top-tier businesses to bring the additional pylon sign back?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bay, that's our intent with the stipulation that before we would entertain that application, we would want five commitments, however formed the applicant can demonstrate that to us. But we would like to see those five with the application to amend this use permit for that third sign.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Now, a question for Earl, and I'll be done. Earl, the question is, should you receive the two pylon signs now? They will go for, I'm assuming you're phasing the project.
Correct.
So how much of this project will we be constructing that would utilize the first pylon signs?
Well, obviously, the first phase of this project is the 60-plus acre power center.
Okay.
However, if we're up and negotiating for those regionally significant tenants, our sending with staff is that if we were able to acquire a couple of the ones that we all know we want, we will be offering them a position on the sign, which means we will probably put them ahead of some power center tenants that would want to be on it because we need to be able to commit. So that third sign may very well be for tenants who are going to end up down in this area or tenants that are still in this area because we've made commitments to these tenants to put them on the sign. So if somebody has to get risk, a risk here, it's probably going to be folks here that really want it because we've got to promise these guys that we can't get them. And staff has indicated that the placement on that third sign does not have to all be top-tier tenants because you may put some of those on the first two signs.
All right. Well, I don't think anybody supports this project more than I do, so I think that you could come back with confidence for a third sign. So I'm really okay with the stipulation as it is. Thank you.
Well, being somewhat of the not a sign advocate, I'm not really for that third pylon sign. I think this is a great project. I think you're going to have no problem with it. I'm a retailer. I see it coming, and I see the top people coming. I think one of the concerns I have, though, is that with the phasing of the two, what we haven't said is that, in the way I would like to see it, is that we put the two signs at either ends, and that way, when you come back for the third, we know that it'll be in the center, rather than having it where we have two that are really close together and say, "Some reason you don't get the third." Well, those are going to look really silly, being right next to each other when we have that spot. So I would like it stipulated that we have specifically the two ends, and then when the third one comes, we put it in the center.
We're okay with that.
And you're okay with that? Okay. And, you know, I just, the sign package is beautiful. I think you've done a tremendous job with all of the inner signs. You know, I have no doubt in my mind that this is going to be a wonderful project, but I'm just so concerned from looking at diehard all the way down that we're just going to have, and just one ugly row there of, it might as well be Yellow Horse and his silly little signs as you're traveling down country roads of, "Come by moccasins, come by," you know, I mean, it's just, it's going to get a little mundane. And so I would prefer that we stick with the two. I know you're not going to have any trouble with the third, and we'll just go from there. But I would like the stipulation about the either ends.
For the applicant, I was just wondering, what, sorry, I'll let you get back up there.
Yes.
What timeframe are you looking at signing? Because it sounds like you seem pretty confident you can sign five people on this list. You know, what timeframe are we talking about that you think you would be coming back for that third sign?
Well, it's a little bit difficult to say, but we are actively marketing this project right now, and we certainly go to all ICSE conventions. And one of the things that you talk about, then, I can just promise you that one of the key things they want to talk about is visibility from the freeway and pylon signage. And so we'll be talking to them about that. Whether we'll be back a year from now, it all depends on how quickly we can secure the tenants and get onto construction. If we use Santan Village as an example, you know, that was essentially approved about two years ago, and you, was it two to three years ago? Two to three years ago, and power center is 90% done. If you're happy to go out there and the regional malls are in construction, we have two commitments on the regional mall for those main tenants, but we still have to work on the others. So even though it's underway, we still have to negotiate other major tenants. I hope that answers your question. It's a little bit flexible, but it could be a year from now, it could be a little bit longer.
Thank you. I don't have any cards that someone would like to speak to this or ask a question. Yes, sir? Would you like to come? And please state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Bergerson. I live at 14417 West Montevista in Goodyear. I'm a local realtor, and the one question I always get is Nordstrom. And I know most people would be most in favor of that third pylon, if the top of it said Nordstrom.
I'd be very happy if you got Nordstrom's. At least it says Goodyear. Okay.
We'd be just as happy.
All right. Okay. If no one else would like to, oh, yes, ma'am.
I am Gail Rusing, retail consultant for the City of Goodyear, and I live at 2057 North 130 Second Drive in the City of Goodyear. Since it was my suggestion that we tie the Nordstrom, I'll say that, Nordstrom. Not necessarily Nordstrom, could be Bloomingdale's, could be whatever high-end anchor that we might be able to get. But actually, it doesn't even have to be an anchor, as long as we get some of those high-end businesses that we really want here. Since it was my suggestion that we tie that to the pylon signs, I would like to clarify that my intent at the time was that they be able to get the third automatically by approval through staff without having to come again for that third pylon. I just want to clarify that because I didn't know it had gone through process after I spoke with the city manager about it, and so I thought I'd better let you know, West Core, that I really planned for all three of them to happen with a great deal of confidence in you to make the five, at least five, happen. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we shall close this hearing, and ask for commission action.
I move, Madam Commissioner, that we, Madam Chairman, that we approve 06300005 with the stipulations and the additional stipulation that you added with regard to having them on either end.
Placement.
Placement.
One second.
Okay. So I move we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that passes. Thank you. Okay. We shall reclose that one, and now we will open the public hearing for the sister case to this. And that is case 06630002, Australia Falls Mall Comprehensive Sign Package. And we'll open the public hearing. Staff has already given the report, unless there's something else you'd like to add, Steve? Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Anybody like to speak? No? Gail? Okay. All right. So, closed. Commission action.
Madam Chair, one thing.
Okay.
Does that stipulation that you added that both signs be at the end?
Yes, sir.
We ought to add that to the stipulations on this item? And if that is added, I would so move case number 06630002 as submitted with the amendment.
Thank you. Motion? A second. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
It's pretty easy with just four of us.
I have seen some newcomers walking in. If you haven't signed in, please do so. And if you'd like to speak, if you'd ask one of these ladies up here to give you a card if you'd like to speak, thank you. Our next case is case 06200002, King Ranch PAD Amendment. We'll open the public hearing. As for staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, members of the public. This exhibit shows King Ranch, the yellow portion shows Estrella Mountain Ranch. You can see the Hila River, King Ranch is orange, you can see Estrella Parkway right here. The exhibit on top is the current land use, King Ranch land use map. The exhibit that is just under that is the proposal that includes the PAD amendment requests, so that you can see both of them as we go through this PAD amendment. There are essentially three requests that the applicant has submitted an application for a PAD amendment, and I will go through each of those quickly with you. The first request is the realignment of Estrella Parkway. If you see the top exhibit here, you can see this is the current alignment of Estrella Parkway, while this exhibit shows the curve being straightened out, it shows an additional brown parcel being added, which is a medium-high-density parcel. Since the approval of the King Ranch PAD, the city has been working on traffic circulation in the larger general area, and has made a series of suggestions to the developer of King Ranch, and the city has been working with King Ranch to try to create a safer and more efficient roadway design as Estrella Parkway moves through King Ranch. And the city believes that the realignment of Estrella Parkway through King Ranch will significantly improve the projected traffic operations on Estrella Parkway in the future. But the effect of realigning Estrella Parkway, you'll see that it creates a 12.6-acre parcel east of Estrella Parkway, and due to the size and the shape of the parcel and the parcel's proximity to Estrella Parkway, the applicant is proposing to designate the 12.6-acre parcel as medium-high-density residential, which would be 10 to 20 dwelling units per acre. The 12.6-acre parcel is not a good site to create a low-density, single-family residential environment because it's too small, because it's adjacent to Estrella Parkway. The applicant believes that a high-density housing product would be preferable in this location, also because of its location to the transportation corridor. The additional comment is that this area here, we have received an application for a proposed resort site located in this area here, so it will also be adjacent to this resort site that you will see in the coming months. So, staff believes that the medium-high-density parcel provides, it's a good transition land use away from the arterial roadway, and it would be compatible with a proposed resort site as opposed to a single-family residential land use. Given that this is, the medium-high-density residential parcel is a new, it's a new parcel that's being introduced to King Ranch, so the applicant has prior development standards for this parcel to help prepare for the site to be developed, and for the most part, the applicant has used our multifamily MF-18 zoning district. There is one component related to open space that the applicant is proposing. Goodyear's zoning ordinance currently requires 400 square feet of recreational open space per unit in the MF-18 zoning district. The applicant is proposing with this PAD amendment to slightly deviate from the zoning ordinance requirement. They're proposing 300 square feet of recreational open space per unit. The applicant reviewed the usable open space standards of other valley cities, they looked at Phoenix, Peoria, Tempe, Chandler, and surprise, the applicant reported that Goodyear's open space requirements are well above that of adjacent valley cities, and the applicant does not believe that reducing the usable open space standard will detract from the quality of any future development. Staff has accepted this request. Staff has urged the applicant to provide sufficient open space standards for the parcel. Staff is mainly concerned about having usable open space standards in the future. And I would refer you to stipulation number five, the applicant has agreed that the 300 square feet per unit standard will include usable recreational open space, so staff has accepted that. If I could now refer to the commercial areas, both commercial areas on the first exhibit, as the commission may recall, when, during the King Ranch general plan, or during the King Ranch zoning process, several members of the planning commission and also the city council, they noted that the, they felt that the commercial area is adjacent to Cotton Lane, should extend to the southern bank of the Hila River, talking about this area here, there was a desire to have that commercial area extend to the river, to be adjacent to this potential amenity area, and ultimately, the staff and the developer believe that minor configuration, reconfiguration of these commercial sites will result in more marketable commercial sites. So, this PAD amendment seeks to reconfigure the commercial areas adjacent to Cotton Lane. You can see the change here. Also, there's a minor change in this area, too, due to the shifting of the roadway. Associated with that request includes the residential land uses adjacent to those commercial sites would also be tweaked a little bit accordingly. The third item that's associated with the PAD amendment, the applicant is seeking the ability to have residential lofts in the commercial parcels. Essentially, the applicant is proposing to have residential dwelling units be permitted to uses on the upper floors in the commercial parcels, and given that the commercial parcels are intended to be mixed-use activity centers, staff is supportive of this request. I would refer you to stipulation number four. Staff has added a provision to ensure that commercial districts will have commercial uses on the first floor, and residential dwelling units will be permitted on upper And if I could just refer you now to your stipulations, there are two changes that I need to walk you through, stipulation number two and stipulation number six in your staff reports. Stipulation number two refers to an navigation easement that is required for King Ranch that was placed in the zoning of the development. The applicant has recently recorded the navigation easement, and so staff recommends that this stipulation be removed from the staff report. Moving on to stipulation number six, it needs to be revised to correspond to the development agreement and the agreements that staff has made with the applicant, and so staff recommends that stipulation number six be revised as follows, I'll read this, and then I will turn it in for the record. "The developer will be responsible to design and construct the Estrella Parkway realignment and proposed roundabouts. Any reimbursements for design and construction costs shall be pursuant to the terms of the adopted development agreement." Staff recommends that stipulation number six be revised accordingly. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions. Mr. Steve Earl with Earl Purley and LaGuard is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Lortano, I'm fine with the commercial moving, were you moving the commercial to the, closer to the river and the lofts? I think that's great. I have concerns about that multifamily piece just kind of hanging out there all by itself. It doesn't seem like it's going to be kind of the most highest density right there, and it doesn't seem like there's any way to get those people to the rest of King's Ranch, to all the amenities over there, so it seems like they're just going to have their own little area over there, and I don't see any parks or any amenities for them, and they're going to have to apparently cross a four- or five-lane street to get over to things, so is there any plan to have any sort of tunnels or walkways so they don't get taken out in the roundabout when they're crossing the street? If I'm driving down the hill, I might just buy accidentally.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lortano, I'll defer that question to the applicant.
Okay. See if you would have brought a Nordstroms, you know?
For your record, my name is Stephen Earl, here today in behalf of the owners of King Ranch. You know, as it relates to this, candidly, this is an outgrowth of a solution to a problem. At the, at both public hearings, in front of this board as well as in front of the council, there were two key issues that were raised, even though it was approved unanimously, there were still two issues that were hanging out there. One had to do with the commercial, everyone said you got to bring that commercial down to the river and make it a functional park, so you can sit out on Veranda and overlook the water, and you can see in that regard that we are bringing water up into the project so that it's not just on the water, it's right next to it, but, so that's one. The other problem was, everyone, you know, that spoke said we don't like Estrella Parkway, it has this big bend in it, it's not safe, and yet, and we were showing an access even farther south that was even more problematic. So, even after it was approved, it was pretty clear that something ought to be done with the alignment of the street. Well, when you get done with the realignment of the street, the old street, of course, went along on the other side of the multifamily, therefore was a part of King Ranch. Now, it's on the other side of that in order for this to be a very gentle curve. Of course, the benefit of that is, is that when you're driving this, you can see all the way down, there's no more blind spots in this. In terms of the traffic circles, there's four of those same traffic circles approved as a part of Estrella Mountain Ranch, so that's kind of the city's desired methodology for moving traffic without having a lot of stoplights. Now, having said that, this project will have direct access to this traffic circle as well as this traffic circle. The road will be eliminated as a road, so it will now be adjacent to open space. So, from the standpoint of putting that where it has a benefit, it has a benefit of overlooking the golf course, not necessarily an amenity, although it is open to the public, so it has that as an amenity feature, but, and in addition, of course, the people who live here have full rights to all of the amenities inside of King Ranch, which includes the, you know, the clubhouse that's being built as a part of the large parks, as well as the whole trail system. Now, will we have a tunnel or a bridge? As far as I know, the answer to that is no, we will not have a tunnel or a bridge, but these people will be able to use this traffic circle to gain access to the main thoroughfare that goes all the way through King Ranch. And if you're on the other side of, on the other side of Cotton Lane, you have to make a decision to get to the other side, so that's just one of the challenges of having a major master plan that has two arterial streets, large arterial streets that run through it. They'll be given all of the benefits of being members of King Ranch, but the logical use of that property is no longer single-family, it really justifies multifamily, and we agree with staff that no more than 10 units per acre unless we bring back a plan that justifies something higher than that.
Oh, can I ask you a follow-up on that? Why didn't you go for the lower dens, a little bit lower density for the townhouse condo? Because I noticed you have that on a 10-acre parcel, you have that on smaller parcels as well.
We do, but what this project never had was a level of density above that townhouse, and if there were, our feeling was, is that the master plan actually lacked the ability to also have a land use above 10 units per acre. We had the townhouse development at six or eight units per acre, we have that in, right in the center of the project, so we felt that we ought to have at least one place where we ought to be able to offer someone a little bit higher density with a lower cost and still be a part of King Ranch with all the benefits of King Ranch, so that's the reason we, and if there's anything in this whole project that could be rented, it's this parcel, everything else is ownership. And we thought, again, you know, on a major master plan of this magnitude, you ought to be able to have the range of housing opportunities for everyone, and we really didn't, that's one piece we didn't have, so we felt this was a good location.
So, you perceive those being more rental, like month-by-month type apartments, rather than more of a condo that you buy into with ownership?
It could be a condo, this is obviously a very high-end project, and I don't want to say it won't be ownership, but if there's a place where, at that density, you can do rental, at 10 units per acre and above, but it's probably, at this point, more condo-oriented than apartment-oriented, just because of the nature of King Ranch, but at least it's a price point that is below the price point of all the balance of the project.
Anyone else? Mr. May?
I have a question for staff, sorry.
I understand. Don't believe me, okay?
Brett, I didn't hear you speak much on the El Rio Research Parcel, and could you tell me what's happening with that, and how does that impact the project?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bay, the El Rio Research site has been revised, it's been relocated out of the King Ranch site during-
Sorry, can you point out where it was before? I may have missed that. It was way over there? Jeez.
I think it is. Purple dot.
Purple area here, relatively small site. During the review of the final PAD, it was deleted due to its being too small to maintain, and the county, it's liked an alternative site. The site is on the north side of Vineyard, east of Bullard Avenue.
Okay, so what are we, what's occurring at that area now?
So, essentially, what has happened in that area is the, you can see that the low-density residential surrounding this has just encompassed that, so they've continued the lining in that small area, the same density of the adjacent low-density residential.
Okay, thank you.
A related question, Brett. I noticed on the map that there's a trailhead for the El Rio Regional Trail. Does that vanish now because of the research project, or is that going to continue the trail?
To answer that question specifically, that does not vanish, the trailhead's still there, it's just that the research park has been built a mile to the east.
Okay, so the trail then actually runs-
Along the entire development, runs all the way along here, and that trailhead is still there, and it runs all the way along.
Right, yeah, okay, so that stays?
That stays, it's all the same, it's just this little parcel way down here that changed.
Good.
Thank you. I have no questions, I think that everything is, did you have one more?
I have one more.
Oh, you said, you said I have one, okay, sneak another one in.
I now have two. Brett, on number two, we're eliminating that, and I presume that it's because it's Luke Air Force Base. Now, if there's an easement, this is an ingress and ingress into Phoenix Goodyear Airport, this area, and so should that be reworded that there's an navigational easement for Phoenix Goodyear Airport rather than Luke?
The navigation easement that's been recorded is for both.
Oh, okay.
We've already recorded it, it's both for Phoenix Goodyear Airport and for Luke.
All right, great, thank you. So, it can be eliminated? All right.
Catherine?
Got it.
This is wonderful, I think that taking that curve out is just what we needed, and I know that did leave a small sliver of a spot that, as Ms. Lortano said, is kind of out there, but, you know, having the mountain and the golf course, I can see a high-end- But, you know, having the mountain and the golf course, I can see a high-end condo area. You know, that would be very, very viable. The, the little roundabouts scare me, but that's because I've lived here all my life driving, and I don't know what they are. So if you see, if you see Sherry running down the hill and you see me sitting there or just going in circles, because I don't know how to get off the biggest, you know, but I guess that makes us a hip community coming, right? So we're, that's, that's very good. And I think this is wonderful. So I have no public comment cards regarding this. Would anyone like to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing. And if there's any further communication or from the commission?
Sorry, one final question, if you don't mind. Sorry, I don't mean to do that. The other, the other issue was that there was a temporary access that was going to occur. And I was curious as to when this would occur? When, when would we be seeing this construction begin?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bay, the applicant is reporting that the, the temporary facility will be constructed with Phase One. So it'll be this year.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry.
What shall they say?
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm waiting on you.
Motion. My motion today is to approve a major amendment to King Ranch Final Area Development PAD with the following stipulations, one, three, four, five, six revised, seven and eight, as presented by staff on number six revision. Move approval?
We have the motion.
One second.
Mr. Bay seconds. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Wow, it's going fast. It's not even 8:00.
I still don't have water in the bathroom.
Wow. See? That's why. Don't drink too much of that, Harvey. Okay, we shall open the public hearing for case 057000005. I got the right one? And that is, okay, Sun Diaz Farms Minor General Plan Amendment. Have a staff report. Oh, and actually, let's go ahead and do both, the rezoning for the staff report, and thank you.
Madam Chair, Commission members, this is an action tonight for 160 acres, generally located southwest corner of Lower Buckeye and Australia Parkway. Property's currently zoned agricultural urban and utilized for agricultural purposes. Two requests tonight before you to facilitate future development of the property. We have a request for a minor amendment to the general plan and also rezoning of the property to preliminary PAD. Currently, the property has land use designations of light industrial and low-density residential, which is before you on the screen. As you can see, most of the property is designated light industrial. The manager is requesting land use designations of low-des, low-density residential, low-medium density residential, community commercial, light industrial, and open space. And those are the land uses on the screen right now. As you can see, they're changing or converting a lot of the light industrial land use to residential. Those requested land uses correspond with the requested PAD zoning and underlying single-family, residential, commercial, retail, and office uses, and light industrial business park uses. Colors on this map, as you can see, the mixed-use business park, office condo correlate with the light industrial, the neighborhood commercial with the community commercial, and the yellows, the single-family land uses. Per our citizen review ordinance, the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting on June 29. At the meeting, we did have several neighbors show up, and their concerns, they were mostly concerned with existing and future traffic that would be generated with this development and just existing traffic that goes along 157th Avenue. And 157th Avenue is this street right here. And that street will connect Sundias Farms with what will likely be the traffic generator is the elementary school located within Australia Vista Development. In response to the neighborhood concerns, the applicant did revise their Collector Road network. As you can see on this map, the Collector Road tees off at both ends, this one right here, where before it was connected. So you would, you could have a straight route through Sundias Farms up into Australia Vista. The applicant has also provided me tonight a petition from 52 residents within Australia Vista and Saraval Village, basically stating their understanding of the proposed Sundias Farm projects, that they do not have any opposition to it, and that they do endorse what is happening here. Staff finds that the applicant has met their burden of showing a minor amendment is an improvement over the existing condition, and that they have met their burden for proving that they have satisfied the valuation criteria for approving a minor general plan amendment. Also, should the minor amendment be approved, staff finds the rezoning is consistent with the general plan and compatible with the surrounding area. As such, staff is recommending approval of both applications, and is recommending approval of the rezoning application subject to modified stipulations. And this is the copy of the memo that was handed out before the meeting. Basically, these changes are clarifications that the applicant asked of staff. Probably the one stipulation, Madam Chair, I'll explain, I'll explain all of them if you'd like. But the one I'd probably like to explain is stipulation 44. In the staff report, you probably noticed that we were not in favor of the deviation to allow parking and drive aisles closer to the right-of-way. Basically, staff was saying, we want to maintain the, generally, it's 30-foot landscape setback along public streets. And staff wanted to maintain that, and that's what we recommended in the staff report. What we're saying in stipulation 44 is that for yards fronting Australia Parkway, Lower Buckeye, and Elwood Street, and any Collector Road fronted by a residential development, such as this road right here, they would, standard setbacks, landscape setbacks would be maintained. However, if it's a local street within a mixed-use business park area or neighborhood commercial, then we will allow the deviation sought by the applicant, which is basically a 10-foot landscape area within a 30-foot building setback. So we would be open to allowing some parking, some drive aisles closer to the street in those instances. And that's what's captured in stipulation 44. And from my understanding and talking with the applicant, these modifications are acceptable with them. With that, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions, as is Mr. Ed Bull.
Thank you, Steve. Water services backup, I think. Any questions of staff?
Are we staying later?
No, that doesn't mean we're staying later, no. You. Mr. DeBrekka?
One question. On 157th, now the school, Desert Star School, is designated while in session with the 15 mile an hour speed limit? Is that signed? So 157th at the school will be signed, but to go 157th, you have to go up, then turn left, and then get on to, is that 157th again that goes by the school, Desert Star?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's designated at 15th. Now, will it, there's a park south of that on 157th. Is that designated as a designated speed at that park? It's on the west side of 157th. So will that slow traffic? The park?
Madam Chair, commissioners, are you asking, sir, if it, is it signed for a lower speed limit?
Yeah, I was just curious. Some parks are, are signed with a lower speed limit, but I didn't see any.
I, I did not recall seeing any.
Okay. All right. Well, that's a, that's a residential street, so that's a 25 mile an hour speed limit normally.
Right, right.
All right.
Anyone else? I do have a question regarding the separation from the industrial and the residential. I really don't like those combinations. Now, I do see that there is an acre buffer zone on parcel nine to the low density, but yet it does not look like it follows that curve going up. Is that correct? The, for parcel eight, how it's curving, yes. And then for the low-medium density, it doesn't look like we have the same one-acre buffer. Why do we only have it at nine and not at eight?
Madam Chair, from staff's review of this project, what we were looking at is parcel nine and parcel two do not have maybe a natural break of the street. So we needed something, something extra to separate the two uses. Between parcel eight and parcel two and parcel three, we will have a collector's street in there, which at minimum is a 60-foot right-of-way for a minor collector. You'll have landscaping on both sides of that-
Of 10 feet that you were just mentioning in stipulation 44? Is that-
In this case, Madam Chair, we would, we would require the full 30 feet.
Oh, 30, okay.
The applicant would have to comply with the 30-foot building setback in any case.
Right.
In this instance, we'd also require that that 30 feet be entirely landscaped, since it does have residential across the street.
Okay. And have we found out if the homes, will the backyards be budding up against the road? Have we been able to see that as an additional buffering of having the backyard in the sense from the house itself? Or is that for the applicant to be able to answer?
Madam Chair, if, if you're asking about lining configurations, I would defer that to the applicant.
Okay, okay. All right. Oh, I know one other question. So when I think back to industrial sites and some of, not that I'm saying they'll be here, but some of the more seedy things that can be in industrial sites, did we not state that we would have from a residential area, I forget, setback was 500, was it 1,000? From say, a massage parlor? Or, I mean, we are putting residential next to industrial, so I'd like to know what, I forget what we had originally decided upon.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the ordinance regarding the, you're referring to tattoo, body piercing, massage establishments? We took that to the city council shortly after you reviewed it, and there was direction, had a work, had the discussion with the city council, and we're taking them out, those uses out of industrial. So they would not be allowed in industrial, only in commercial.
Okay.
And it's okay.
Neighborhood commercial?
No, I believe it's just C2, just the C2 difference. So it would not be allowed in the C1. I assume this is C1. It's C2?
It is C2.
So it would be allowed in C2.
CD and C2. I see. So what is the setback there?
Um-
No seedyness.
Well-
No seedyness.
Madam Chair, the, the adult businesses is 1,000 feet, but the staff is going to reevaluate the 1,000 feet. And then the massage and body piercing, I believe, or, I'm sorry, the tattoo and body piercing, I think it was quarter mile, 1,300.
So, so really, we're still out of that area, pretty much, it sounds like?
You could, if that's C2, you could potentially have one of those uses there. I mean, yes, you could have one of those uses. Yes. I mean, that, the way the ordinance reads and the zoning would allow those there.
Okay. The applicant? Sir?
Thank you, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. I'm here with Todd Tupper from Sun MP and Kevin Kugler from RBF on behalf of Sun DNS Farms. To begin with, we appreciate staff's recommendations for approval on both the general plan amendment and on the preliminary PAD. And we accept all of staff's stipulations with the modifications they've made to them on the preliminary PAD. Obviously, you've had a detailed presentation, both in writing and verbally, from staff. I presume that you don't want to have me replow all those same furrows again. I'll make as full a presentation as you'd like, but presuming you don't-
Oh, the bathrooms aren't working, but.
I didn't hear what you said?
I didn't, I was saying-
There are five things I'd like to, to touch on, and I'll touch on them in 15 seconds apiece, or less, I assure you. With respect to those things, this is really a transition property. It's a transition property that has industrial on some sides and residential on some sides. And what we've done here is provide some meaningful, compatible transitions in order to make this a good, compatible PAD that is consistent with our land uses on two sides and consistent with our land uses on two other sides, because we're caught in the middle between the two. Secondly, what we're really doing through the GPA is, is we're making some site-specific adjustments to a policy that was proposed in conjunction with Luke in the 11th hour at the city council, that was never approved by GPAC, never approved by your planning commission, was approved in context of Luke. What's ironic, because it didn't get applied to Luke, it got applied to this one site adjacent to Phoenix Goodyear. I think it was done in a manner that, that people were trying to do the right thing in the 11th hour at the council, and a 4-3 vote had passed. But we believe with the context of Luke, let's someday look at this more closely on a site-specific basis, and that's what we're here to do. We're here to do that in the context of not only the general plan amendment, but also the preliminary PAD. Thirdly, we simply believe that this general plan amendment and preliminary PAD make good land use sense and are compatible on this transitional piece of property. Fourth, we're very pleased with the neighborhood support. We had a great neighborhood meeting. We not only had the neighborhood meeting, but where I think almost all but one neighbor who was there was supportive of what we were trying to do. That one particular neighbor, I believe, would prefer that the 160 acres simply remain vacant. We would prefer that it- We would prefer that it not remain vacant, to be that as it may. In addition to that, we had some people go door-to-door and have gathered, as was indicated so far, 52 signatures in support from properties both along the north and along the west. In addition to that, SUNMP agreed through RBF to help the neighbors take traffic counts within their existing neighborhood along 157th Avenue and offer some possible ideas that those existing neighbors could discuss with staff about possible traffic calming alternatives that neighbors and staff could discuss. It justified. It's an existing neighborhood. We've done everything that we can through offsetting the streets and so on to not cause cut-through traffic through the neighborhood, and been very sensitive to that, plus provided the additional homework for staff and the neighbors to consider. And then finally, we fully recognize that the general plan amendment and the preliminary PAD, which is all that we're here on, are the first two steps in the process. We're going to be back in front of your commission, we'll be back in front of your council with not only the final PAD, but also with preliminary Platts and final Platts, and with staff through site plan approval and so on. With those five points in mind, with respect to a couple of questions that were asked, although we're not here with preliminary Platts, yet we would anticipate that single-family lots will be backing up to these collector's streets, certainly not fronting on, possibly siding on at the end of a cul-de-sac or something, but we would anticipate there'd be some additional rear yard or side yard buffering that would occur along the collectors. In addition to that, with respect to the issue of tattoo parlors and body piercing and that type of thing, I don't know where the ordinance is eventually going to end up coming out of the council, but it sounds like it's probably something that would be prohibited by ordinance occurring on this site, which is fine, because in addition to that, if you want, we'd be happy to stipulate that whatever that list of uses is that's being considered by the council, we'd be happy to stipulate that those uses will be prohibited in this 160 acres, irrespective of whether we're talking about the commercial part or the light industrial part. With that, we, as I indicated, appreciate staff's recommendations for approval, we accept the stipulations, we appreciate the neighborhood support. I know that there's some neighbors here tonight, I hope some to speak in support, I don't know if there's here any in opposition or not. If I could, I'd like to reserve a couple minutes for rebuttal if need be.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I did have some questions, just one or two, actually. First of all, let me just say that, thank you, that I like the fact that this is a good transition. Elwood Road in the past has presented some real challenges for the communities north of it, the types of uses that have been presented to this commission before. So this looks like a real good transition, so I just want to let you know that I like this transition because it's in harmony and it will make this community have a sense of community with the surrounding communities, and it has an opportunity for some usage that they can get that won't be available in other communities. So I think this is a good plan. The couple of things that concern me is the buffer, again. I don't know if we need to stipulate it here or wait until something comes to us, but I would like for that buffer to remain on the residential side of any barriers that's going to be constructed, and maybe that's something that could wait, but I wanted to be noted at this point that if it's going to be a buffer, then let it be a benefit to the residents. The other question I had, though, was on the Estrella Parkway Inn, I thought, I'm not sure, maybe Harvey's one of you can answer this, did we have some sort of overlay district for Estrella Parkway, and did it extend to that area? It did not. Does it end at that area?
Madam Chair, it goes from basically McVal Road, north of McVal, to the north boundary of the city center, basically Goodyear Boulevard.
Okay, I thought we were doing a street skate.
We did extend it, the caveat that was landscape and landers, we did extend the landers concept down to all the...
To 85, was it?
Yeah, all the way to 85.
Okay, so while it's not an overlay district, are there some amenities that we anticipate for these properties as they construct along Estrella Parkway?
It just impacts the landscape power, and we continue to be constructing in the median, and we have a theme street along the perimeter of Estrella Parkway, various plant material, so it's coordinated, so we have a home building down Estrella Parkway, so this applicant would require it, but there wouldn't be any, it's kind of a structural setback.
Okay.
Land use...
I just didn't want us to miss it, so...
Just a second, just in case you guys may be talking, kind of apples and oranges.
Okay.
Oh, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, that's different. Never mind, never mind.
Are we talking apples and...
Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner, I agree with everything Harvey said.
It's your benefit, huh?
In addition to what he said, there's also this crosshatching on the general plan that the acronym for it is HIMAC, which is High Intensity Mixed Use Corridor. And Kevin, who was intimately familiar with this with Harvey back a few years ago, I think nicknamed it HIMAC, if I remember right.
Along with the red banana and a few other...
Some of those kind of things. I agree completely with what Harvey was saying about the city center overlay stuff applies north of here, but the HIMAC crosshatching, if anything, suggests, you know, there ought to be some residential along here for various reasons. So that's part of what we talked about in our project booklet, is why we believe that our suggestions and land use proposals here are consistent for a variety of reasons having to do with transition and other kinds of things, including some of the elements of HIMAC.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I do have two citizen cards here to speak. Jody Taylor, please state your name and address. Into the microphone, please.
My name's Jody Taylor, my address is 15652 West Hilton Avenue. It is in the Estrella Vista subdivision, which is just north of the project. I'm here to say that I really appreciate the consideration and support that myself and my neighbors have received from the planning consultants. They did make this change to the 157th Avenue, coming from Pioneer, looping through the development, back over into our subdivision, where it is 157th Avenue, which was our main concern due to traffic problems. We already experienced some traffic and speeding problems, and we just didn't want an addition, all these additional residences and people driving through our neighborhood. Other roadways that surround the entire community that have similar uses to what 157th Avenue could become, if the cutoffs weren't implemented, their residences back up to those streets. We have houses that face those streets, and we have a large park where a lot of children play, so we were very concerned about that. But they've been very supportive, and we approve this change.
Thank you. And we did take a drive down that road and did see what you were talking about. Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. Okay, wait, did you want to...
Do you have a card?
Yes, I have one more. Jim McLaren? He's not here? Okay.
I can't find it.
All righty. I doubt we have a rebuttal. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? All right. Close the public hearing and ask for motion action.
Madam Chair, move to approve case 057000005, SUN DS Farms Minor General Amendment, and with any, no, there aren't stipulations with that, so just as presented.
Thank you. Motion? I'll second. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Okay. Case 0620000027, opening the public hearing for SUN DS Farms Rezoning. Staff has already given the presentation. Anything to be added? No? All righty. Any other questions or concerns? Did the applicant want to say anything else?
We agree with staff.
And Ms. Taylor? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing and ask for motion action.
Madam Chair, motion to approve case 0520000027, SUN DS Farms Rezoning, and I believe there are 51 stipulations, and numbers 11, 32, 34, 37, 44, and 47 are revised, and so I would include those revisions in the stipulations. I recommend approval.
Thank you. Second? I'll second. It's our time. CD this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You guys have it. Thank you, thank you for coming. And last, but not least, our staff communication and the overview of the Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment.
Madam Chair, the Commission, members of the public, on August the 2nd, the city filed a major general plan amendment on the, what we call the Sonoran Valley, general plan amendment, major general plan amendment, we're referring to Sonoran Valley, which extends south of our planning area at Patterson Road, approximately four miles south of State Route 238, excuse me, and encompasses approximately 95 square miles or 60 around, 60,000 acres, over 60,000 acres. So fairly significant, you probably read about in the papers, so we thought appropriate that we give you an overview. The gentleman behind me, Kevin Kugler, some of you...
Who's that? I don't see that.
Some of you know him from a previous life here at the city. He works for RBF, and RBF's been hired, and they were instrumental in putting the general plan amendment application together that was filed at the city, so this is sponsored by the city. But Kevin can, will, is going to assist me in the presentation, answer specific questions. He has intimate knowledge about the application, so I'll just give you somewhat, we're going to give you an overview, just give you a chance to ask questions, and I went really too fast, didn't I?
It's okay.
I guess we really, several other parties, some of the background, the city got, basically got wind of a land assemblage that was going on in the Mobile area, which is south, directly south of Goodyear several months ago. Elliott Homes, which was assembling approximately just under 10,000 acres they've assembled so far, and then Montage Holdings has approximately 690-some acres. So there's, there were two developers, builders in the Mobile area that were going to do filings in Maricopa County for what we would call urban-type development, small lot development with their own water and sources, and more using a private company, and felt like there was an opportunity possibly for the city to have that incorporated into the city and connect to the city, opportunity to provide for protection of land uses south of EMR, south of Estrella Mountain Ranch, as well as provide for connectivity, regional transportation network extending the 303. In our current general plan, if you recall, in 2003, the Loop 303 just ended, I think it rigs with an arrow, so we felt, you know, we need to do something with that, obviously a major transportation facility just can't end, so extending it eventually, ultimately to I-8 made sense from a regional standpoint. So there are several things going on in the time, so we began discussions with Elliott Homes, Montage Holdings, Elliott Homes being represented by Stephen Earls up there, and I believe Montage Holdings is here, or he was here. Joe, yeah, I guess we found out the water was on. Joe Porter, we're working with Joe Porter, who's Montage Holdings representative, and Elliott Homes, and I believe Jeff is here, so. So the purpose, this was, this was a PowerPoint that we provided to the press after our, on August the 8th, so that's why the PowerPoint is, says press briefing. So we want to give you a, give you a understanding of what the schedule is presently, the frequently asked questions, staff put together 10 frequently asked questions in response, that's Joe Porter. Frequently asked questions with comments, and then we had a community meeting, and we had quite a few questions, and then we responded to those questions, and those questions and answers are on the city's webpage. All of this is on the city's webpage, under Hot Topics, if you go to the main point. So I kind of gave you that already, a little briefing on the Elliott and Montage Holdings, how we got involved, we began talking about city providing the services. What impact would this have on the city? Well, it obviously is significant. Our current planning area is 135 square miles. We're adding 95 square miles, I indicated, about 60-some thousand acres, increases our planning area by 70%, up to 230 square miles. Our current population build-out is 380,000, based upon the average densities that are in the 2003 general plan, so if you add this additional acreage, we're talking about roughly, you know, 185,000 additional population. I think it's, I think it may be 200,000 when you include the state line, I think it's closer to 200,000 rather than 185, so it'll be, it'll be over 100, half a million population. So I gave you a little bit of brief, I want some of the reasons for this, why, you know, why in the world would the city want to expand our planning areas? We want to ensure quality development to the south, protect our investment that in Estrella Mountain Ranch, we have general plan amendments going right up to Patterson Road, right now we'll have infrastructure going right up to Patterson Road. There's 51% of this land area is BLM land, so we have an opportunity to preserve this BLM land as open space, and also, as I indicated, providing for and protecting a corridor for the 303 freeway, which we think is an essential. So we have a major valley north-south corridor, so we're not dependent upon the 303, Estrella Parkway, major facilities going up to I-10, so we have another option out. There's the map. The dark area that you see, you see the yellow, obviously Goodyear, the planning area, the Mobile, you see the road, two, State Route 238 going through Mobile, and then the area that's dashed that goes all the way down to I-8, that's known as the Vicle Valley, and that's not part of this application. That's 65 square miles. We have had discussions, very preliminary discussions, with a few of the landowners in this area, and there may be interest in them coming into... And there may be interest in them, uh, coming into the city, uh, through another general plan amendment within, within a year. But at this time, we're only looking at the ninety-five square miles. But they are definitely interested in the three oh three alignment, preserving that alignment and providing that transportation facility. Here's a breakdown of the acreages, um, state land, private ownership, um, BLM as indicated, over fifty percent of it is federal ownership, roughly forty percent is private ownership, and state land is, uh, nine percent. We're actually, one of the things that Kevin's firm has done is done land planning on the state land. We've been closely working with the state land and, um, they would be, um, approving the application. They basically gave us authority to do the land planning and they would sign on to annexation or the general plan amendment when the time comes. I can't see that. Maybe I'll have a-
(laughing)
This is, this is where Kevin takes over. He's younger, he has younger eyes, and I do so. I'll let Kevin take over and he'll give you kind of a rundown of the general plan amendment. Did you need some?
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission. Nice to be in front of some familiar faces. The, my, my eyes are just slightly better than Harvey's. That's a, that's a lot of information on one slide right there, but the upshot of it all is, is that if you look at the, the land plan, the land use plan, that's of course on the right side of the graphic there, is, you can essentially see two master plan-like land masses. Uh, the northern portion, which is closest to, and but it's Patterson Road, which is the existing City of Goodyear municipal planning area boundary and Estrella Mountain Ranch boundary, coincidentally, is approximately five thousand acres of primarily state trust lands mixed in with some private holdings, of which there is a mixture of land uses that would be typical, uh, found in most master plans, certainly Estrella Mountain Ranch, Pond Valley, and many areas throughout, uh, the Phoenix metro area, that includes a varying degree of residential densities that are rooted in, of course, Goodyear's general plan categories, uh, various densities, residential, um, densities, as well as commercial and industrial land uses. Um, so that's about five thousand acres on the north side, the, the northerly land mass, if you will. Uh, the southerly land mass is approximately twenty thousand acre land bubble, if you will, that, uh, the essence of that includes, as Harvey touched on, about ten thousand acres of which is in holdings by Elliott Homes and is, with whom Mr. Earl represents as part of kind of the cohesiveness that unites his plan, is the, the BLM property that Harvey was speaking to, which is predominantly in green, the, the open space green, if you will, is the linkage and/or separation, depending on how you look at it, between the two land use masses and the upwards of-
There'd be a train.
Yeah, well, there's, there's, there's a train of wildlife that actually proceed in between the two properties, which it's, it's kind of faint, and I apologize on that graphic, it's difficult to see. Um, but there is a, a connection that, of a wildlife movement corridor that will be an exciting opportunity to study and explore how to incorporate that in between the two master, future master plan communities that, uh, recognize the migration of bighorn sheep, amongst others, in between the Sierra Estrella Wilderness Area, of course, with the Estrella Mountains in the north and east, and the Sonoran Desert National Monument to the south and to the west. So that's a, an established wildlife movement corridor, which will be a key component along with the, the master planning amongst the two larger land masses, if you will. What's shown on the chart, uh, just real briefly, and it, it is difficult to read, you can refer to it more succinctly in your books, but there's varying degrees of residential densities, as I mentioned, um, rural residential, low, medium residential, medium high, high, and so forth, with percentage breakdowns that would be fairly typical of a lot of different master plans. A lot of thought went into that component. As Harvey also touched on, it's important to identify the Loop Three oh Three corridor, which jumps out on a better, uh, better, on a different graphic, mind you, but, um, it, it's beginning, uh, if you will, begins at the north part of the state trust piece, at the half-section line between Litchfield and Bullard, which basically bisects the middle of that state trust piece, comes down and then ultimately connects to the, the Elliott Homes holdings, uh, to the south, and then onward, as Harvey mentioned, to the south. Ultimately, that vision to connect I ten and I eight is a regional transportation corridor is essential to that. One of the importances of that is the employment opportunities that are then, oh, sure. I think I brought this one before, didn't I? The, the three oh three, if you can, well, that's not good for you guys on that.
(laughing)
For those of us out here.
That's right. Have fun.
I'll flip to a better graphic and go to Elmo. But the, the importance of that, what I was going to recognize, guys, is the opportunity to not just be a bedroom community, is the opportunity to create employment opportunities as well. Both with the three oh three, and this isn't helping, mind you, but the three oh three corridor going down the state trust piece, as well as the extension of Rainbow Valley Road, is the two primary vehicular corridors. And, uh, the advent of rail, both existing and the, the opportunity for Union Pacific to build a double rail track, uh, in the now former, not former, the existing Mobile area, that's within the southern land mass, opportunity to create value with employment in, in the area as well. So I could take further questions on that, otherwise I'll, I'll move on to the next slide. Um, a little bit redundant, but, uh, as Harvey pointed out, those, those are, and I can point to a better slide, actually, on the Elliott Land Holdings, which includes about ninety-two hundred acres, um, and is north and south of State Route two thirty-eight, as I mentioned, which is in the, the, the community of Mobile, is unincorporated area, obviously, right now. Mixture of housing and jobs. We are talking several decades of build-out, which these gentlemen can speak to more articulately than I. Um, a couple slides with respect to, uh, the Montage Holdings, which is the, uh, first phase, it's approximately six hundred and ninety acres, that would be located in the northeast corner of that larger land bubble that was sown down south, kind of formerly or often referred to as the Broadstone Preserve property. This is some preliminary, uh, conceptual planning, uh, that, uh, Mr. Porter and his team have put together in anticipation of a zoning application, once the general plan amendment, and assuming that commission and council, uh, approve those processes and the annexation would be the next stage, and then subsequent to that would be PAD zoning. This is some of the preliminary planning that, uh, Mr. Porter and his shop have done with respect to those particular first phase lands, and we can get to that in more detail if you like. Without trying to be too discombobulated in this presentation, the, the road framework, there's been a lot of work that, that my shop has done, uh, in particular on the transportation network. There's still, while there's been some preliminary cuts at it, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, uh, both within the ninety-five square mile region, but also uniting and with Estrella Mountain Ranch. The other applicants who you all will be seeing in a couple of months with, uh, their applications on general plan amendments in and around Estrella Mountain Ranch and these properties, further discussions need to commence to kind of unify a cohesive circulation framework down to the south. But the essence of what you're talking about here is regional roadway system, as I mentioned. As you can see on your monitors there, the extension of, uh, Rainbow Valley Road, um, would, would proceed sou- southerly along its existing alignment, and then follow that diagonal, which is often referred to as Comacchi Road, which many of us know as the, the utility line corridor, the, uh, El Paso Gas Line, has had a large transmission line there for years and years, and is getting ready to proceed in the not-too-distant future with a five hundred KV, uh, overhead, uh, power line, uh, that's going to serve central Arizona from the Palo Verde Plant, the Pinell West Line, as it's referred to. So along that diagonal, and it's almost better if I go to Elmo to point to it, but the, there's a series, as you can imagine, of arterial roads that will serve these larger properties, arterial streets, collectors and locals, which will be city streets. I mentioned the three oh three already, connecting, uh, someday through Estrella Mountain Ranch and then to the south and ultimately to I eight. And of course, like any good master plan, you have to have the provision of trails, uh, for pedestrians and bicycles, which will be incorporated as the land use planning becomes more refined, uh, through the process. And I would be remiss if I did not mention, again, the Union Pacific Railroad and the opportunities that it provides, not only for, uh, employment-based, uh, opportunities, but, uh, and perhaps it's a little bit of a pipe dream now, but the provision of commuter rail is a, is a likelihood down this particular area. It is already being discussed with the county. Public facilities, uh, kind of like Harvey was pointing out, you might ask, particularly in the southern reaches, uh, there's not a water sewer pipe that's aiming at that property today, so how does the advent of utilities come to be? Well, it's a combination of things that people a lot smarter than I are working on right now, that's, uh, particularly on the, the southern portions with the, the private land holdings, that would probably be the first to take off in terms of the development of these properties. Uh, ultimately, you are looking at City of Goodyear, uh, water and wastewater, if I can focus on those two for a minute. Uh, but it's, you, it would be more than likely to expect that the, a line from, say, Estrella Mountain Ranch is not going to be constructed down to, say, the Broadstone Preserve piece, by example, that there's probably a strong likelihood of a self-contained system being, uh, designed and constructed by the development community, designed and constructed to city specifications of which the city then would, would own and operate, possibly with the help of an interim provider, a private sector provider, and in agreement with those types of users, and/or with the city, uh, from the get-go. Those, those things are still being ironed out. Police and fire are fully intended to be City of Goodyear provided on an, on an incremental service provision basis, as well as parks and recreation, uh, for the, and for the open spaces will be, uh, city and a combination of city and HOA maintained. And school districts are an important, obviously, factor for the, a growth of, uh, this magnitude, and those discussions have already commenced, uh, primarily with the Mobile Elementary School District, as they are an elementary school district existing. There is no high school district currently slated for the area, so the, the notion of Mobile Elementary unifying into a high school for a unified district is, uh, in the throes of the, at least the preliminary discussions. Not sure which one to, uh, Harvey could probably touch on this a little bit better, but simply put, that, as you know, with major general plan amendments, particularly of this nature, expanding the planning area boundary, uh, several copies, uh, of this book have been distributed by Harvey's team to all the various government agencies, and we're in the sixty-day review period for anybody and everybody to comment on this plan, positively or otherwise. And that date is going to be concluding at early October the second, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, so. And as Harvey noted, all the materials are available on the website. And, uh, this presentation's been a little bit massaged in different venues, but some of the questions, is it something we want to get into, or? Okay. In terms of the components of the plan, I, I know, I believe you all have seen the book. I know it probably puts you to sleep as you looked at it, but, uh, it's a lot to take in. But the various components of the plan, whether ownership-based, land use-based, circulation, any comments or questions relative to that? And I'll transition to Harvey on some of the-
I haven't seen it, but that's okay.
Okay.
Book?
A book.
Yeah.
But that's okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it's forthcoming. Comments, questions? Do you all have a clear understanding of where the property is? I can go back and, okay.
So the community of Mobile will actually be the City of Goodyear then, correct?
Uh, yes.
I mean, they're not going to hold on to being Mobile, will they?
That's a good point.
And that's like taking over Waddell. What would Waddell be?
This, in terms of the, the stages of the process, if, if things go, quote-unquote, according to plan, that, this is the first stage in the process, is looking at the city's general plan and an expansion of the municipal planning area. The application submitted on behalf of the city and by the city has been submitted, going through the sixty-day review. It'll come to you all for a, a minimum of two public hearings, as required by statute, and then ultimately the city council would be considering it, most likely in December, and then, uh, perhaps acting on it in January. Subsequent to that process would be the annexation process, of which the rubber hits the road, so to speak, with respect to property owners who would be included within the extension of the, the city municipal limits via the Formal Annexation Act. But to answer your question, as was discussed more eloquently by Mr. Earl in front of the citizens of Mobile at a meeting that was held a week and a half ago, uh, those residents who would like to come into the city are more than happy to come into the city, those, uh, who wish to maintain more of a rural lifestyle and would opt to stay out of the city, that will be their option as well. So no one's going to force anyone in to the city. Like any annexation, there may be a select occasion where there's one little piece of property that creates that proverbial island, some, potentially some more discussions with those folks may have to ensue, but by and large, it's an open invitation for those who want in and those who don't, don't, so.
What is the population of Mobile?
Yeah, a hundred, twenty-five or so families. I think we had about a-
Nichols.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a hundred and twenty-five property owners at the meeting that don't all live there, but I think like Harvey's suggesting, there's twenty-five, thirty formal families that are down there, so.
We got three of them.
And they have a split district.
The whole town.
Wow.
And I think it's important to point out, some of those residents had that concern of not wanting to lose their identity, and as, as the city manager pointed out astutely, is that, you know, this type of growth within the framework in the City of Goodyear, as it's already a linear community, it's more and more at setting itself up for a village type of, uh, situation. This could be a separate village, and there's an opportunity through more refined planning to identify characteristics of old, old Mobile, if you will, to maintain some of that heritage. So that was brought forward to those residents, and I think they were appreciative of that. So I, I know it was a little discombobulated, but we tried to hit everything we could in a, in short order, so.
Just, just a thought, I, you know, just put this sort of out there. Uh, it looks like an extremely long extensive land. I think about a city center being located way up on Estrella and Yuma, and, and the people in Mobile, some, I don't know how many miles away, uh, to politically and legislatively serve them, uh, has there been any thought to certain things such as districting, or maybe having satellite offices in the area, so that we really can, as a community, as a city, serve them in those areas, which is so far away?
Okay. I'll start, you finish. Um, there's an opportunity, maybe perhaps I can switch to Elmo would be more appropriate, but, um, it's a good point, Commissioner Bay, that with, with and through the land use plan that's been done, there's an opportunity to create village centers, in terms of that, that fusion of, you know, cultural, entertainment, government office, commercial, so on and so forth, within both areas. I think, we believe there's opportunities, uh, for both of those, and with, with that would come satellite government, uh, operational facilities, for lack of a better term, whether they're administrative, public works, certainly fire and police. Uh, those opportunities, uh, we believe do exist. As far as the council district dean, I'd probably turn that over to Harvey, but I think the city charter is two hundred thousand for, for formal districting of, for council districts.
I don't think we'll get there with those twenty-five families.
Hundred, hundred fifty. I guess I stand corrected. It's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Couple of comments. One is, will we see a Mobile Safeway?
A what?
I know, uh, Ms. Osborne was saying, you know, Estrella Mountain Ranch doesn't have a Safeway, but Mobile, Mobile may have a Safeway. Number two- Number two is, we'd have our own garbage dump.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
That's on the north side of Mobile.
Yes.
That facility.
Excellent point, and that was remiss for not bringing that up as a, a key consideration in the land use planning. And this is evident, this is a new Elmo, and I'm not sure how to zoom in and out, but you can see the, the massing, Commissioner DeBrocker, uh, the, the purple area identified.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to go out.
I mean, that's the dump.
That's there right now.
No, I know, I know. The purple is the dump, that's what I'm asking you.
Yeah, yeah.
There's others here that could probably speak more eloquently than I, but the members of both the city and the private sector community have had extensive discussions with waste management, who owns and operates that, uh, the Butterfield landfill. And you're right, it is a large landfill. It's a key consideration to provide, uh, appropriate land use planning to not only protect their investment, but also the, the development community's investment with respect to element of residential, so. So there's been a lot of discussions and care that have gone into the land planning to ensure that that facility is properly buffered, and there's been open dialogue between all parties to ensure everyone's moving forward in a, in a comfortable manner.
Yeah. I'd just a comment on that, I like to drive out the gas line road, and so I spend a lot of time out there, but that's a well-managed facility. It's clean, and it would be an asset to the community, and...
There's Hog Rendering Plant could go right by there.
There's Hog...
Hog Rendering Plant, and, and the Primatorium?
And the Primatorium.
There you go, okay. That is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Third, third comment is, this is probably the best, best planning for the 303, and it looks like it would probably be from the southernmost limit of the boundary, about, what, eight miles to Interstate 8? If you were to go four miles south of Mobile, it would only be about eight miles.
That's correct.
This is wonderful opportunity to plan for traffic to, to get around Phoenix on a 303, you know, this is wonderful. This is, this is needed. Great, great. More power to you.
Appreciate the comments, and yes, Commissioner, you're a very astute Commissioner DeBrocker, you've done your homework. That is, from the southern boundary of the Broadstone Preserve piece predominantly, that it is about eight miles due south to Interstate 8, in the Vico Valley, as Harvey touched on, for that connection of not only the Loop 303, but Highway 238 becomes an instrumental vehicular connector to, adjacent to the east here, is the town of Maricopa, and a lot of growth that's planned in that particular area, that then connects to 347 and up to I-10. So you're absolutely right, it creates a real asset for an outer belt, if you will, that provides connectivity that's going to be needed someday in this area, so it's, it's very forward-thinking that way.
I guess the last comment is, that Union Pacific that runs through Mobile goes to, goes to Yuma, and then to San Diego, this is unnatural because the, of the accident that happened on the piece that Awak Caliente, that Southern Pacific quit running trains. So this is the route from Tucson to the west, and this is wonderful, too.
I think the railroad recognizes that, while, while I'm not a foremost authority on that, but they are, with the fuel prices of the way they are, with conventional transportation of trucking and airplanes, that rail, the rails are getting more and more, more people are knocking on their door for use, and to the extent that they are going to be, as I understand, double-tracking this rail all the way from Tucson to, I think, to California and beyond, so it's, it's an excellent opportunity.
Anything else? Was that, oh, Harvey?
Madam Chair, just a couple of things. First, the, the, the plan and the maps are on the webpage. Also, I could get you the, the CD, we can bring you a CD, or I'll get you a hard copy next week. You'll have plenty of time to review this, as I indicated, the 60-day review period started 1st of August, and then we're planning on having, tentatively, a work session with the city council on September 18th at this point, to review the, the general plan and the timeline with the council. And then, the 60-day review period ends on October 2nd. We're required to have two public hearings where all of the major plan amendments are considered at one meeting. We have, I believe, five or six, six others, is that right, Brad? Six other general plan amendments. So at one hearing during the course of the year, we have to consider all of them collectively, and it's the spirit and the intent of the growing smarter, and so we're planning on having the first public hearing in October, and then you'll have a second hearing in November. We're also required to have it at different locations, so we'll probably have the first one, I think Joe was going to arrange the ti, places, but Desert Edge High School, we'll probably have one of them, and then the second hearing will be in this location. The other thing I wanted to review with you, if I take, there's also been a desire, there's been suggested to me by others, that we have, take our show on the road, and go to Mobile, take the Planning Commission to Mobile, and we're going to have to get each of you hummers to get you down there, but no, we'll, we'll go the long way, it takes about an hour and a half to drive there, and have a, you know, basically, we'll have a public hearing in Mobile on this general plan amendment with the folks in Mobile. I thought it was, it was suggested at first that we have one of the two planned public hearings in Mobile, but I, I have been down there, and the room isn't air-conditioning, and to bring all the other applicants from Phoenix there, I, I think, I do them, I just do want to do that.
The room is in air-condition?
The room is in air-condition, not, not air-conditioned well, let's put it that way. It was very...
Maybe 25 families?
So, I don't know, that's something that's been suggested, I think it would be good that if we're...
Well, October's cooler.
We'll do it in, even November, if we're not sure. So anyways, we'll have the two public, the two required public hearings, then we'll have an additional public hearing just in Mobile for Mobile residents, I think it's appropriate, and then in December, in, sorry, December, I think 11th, it would go to council for consideration, looking at adoption, hopefully in, in January of 2007. The city is only initiating the general plan amendment, we're not initiating annexation. Elliot Holmes and Montage Holdings plan to initiate annexation probably in October, very soon. We'll be submitting an annexation request to the city on this property, so we'll be processing that, they will be collecting signatures, they will be working with the property owners in Mobile. So I just wanted to give you that overview, and I apologize that you haven't got a copy of the hard document yet, but you will get one. We had, we had a lot of them, we had to send them out to federal agencies, state agencies, local agencies, surrounding airport, and various other BLM, and lots of other organizations, so... If you have any questions, I mean, on the process?
Just for clarification of our September calendar, are we having, we're going to have the work session on the 18th, so then we'll be having the regular meeting on the 20th then, correct? Are we going to need to have one earlier in the month at all? Are we okay?
Madam Chair, the 18th is a council, just a council...
Just council, we don't need to be there.
You, you can be there, obviously, I'm telling you, yeah, it would be, if you want to come.
But it's not a joint.
It's a joint, we're...
That's, okay, that's...
No, it's not a joint.
It's not a joint, okay.
We have, we were going to, the, the decision on where we would have the Desert Edge meeting, what day, which, when will be, will be a function of when the meeting, we can get the room, the room is going to dictate when we can meet, and Joe knows, so Joe...
We have the first public hearing October 20th at Desert Edge.
Okay.
That was the day we get to school. And then the second one will be November.
And the second one will be in November here, so you've got your...
But regular September scheduling, then, not to...
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Look to the staffers. Okay?
Okay.
So that's the schedule.
Anything else, can anyone? Shall we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.